Counselor Lamatina.
Yeah.
Counselor Linehan.
Yeah.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yeah.
Counselor Murphy.
Yeah.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yeah.
Counselor Presley.
Counselor Wu.
Counselor Yancey.
Yeah.
And Counselor Saikum. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. At this time, I would like to ask Counselor Presley to come to the rostrum here. And as Counselor Presley will introduce today's clergy, I'd like to remind everybody that after the invocation is delivered, I would ask all members and guests to remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance, which Counselor Presley will lead us in. So without further ado, Counselor Presley.
I want to invite Reverend Dr. Conley Hughes, Jr. to the rostrum. I do have an extensive file that I could read about this very accomplished and impressive young man, but I won't read it. This is my pastor. This is the man who prayed with and ministered to and brought communion for my mother in the seven weeks that she was on life support. This is the man who did the premarital counseling for myself and my future husband and who ultimately brought us together in holy union. He married us. So this is a very special man to me personally, but I know that I don't have the monopoly on the many special offerings and gifts. He's selfless and generous with his gifts and with his ministry. He has been the senior pastor at Concord Baptist Church for 26 years. He and the Reverend Dr. Maureen Hughes, who have been married for 38 years, are inspiring partners both in marriage and also in their life ministry. Pastor Hughes is a minister. He is a shepherd. He is, despite his awesome power and oratory finesse, and he can sing well, too, he walks very softly. He's one of the most humble men I've ever met, and so it is my great honor to bring before you to deliver the invocation for today's council meeting, my good friend, a man I admire tremendously and will be eternally grateful, too, for his ministering to our family throughout the years, the Reverend Dr. Conley Hughes, Jr.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Let us pray. Almighty God, we come before your presence on this day. We thank you for members of this council. We pray that you will give them wisdom as they deliberate the issues that affect so many. We thank you for this city upon a hill. We thank you for the history, the heritage, and the legacy of this great city. We thank you for these public servants who give of their time, their energy, and who give of their gifts to improve the quality of life of all of the citizenry of this great and historic city. We pray, oh God, your blessings upon them as we embark today upon the beginning of the autumn season. May we be reminded of change. May we be reminded of transition. And may we be reminded that you are ever present with us. We commend this day to you. Bless our counselors. Grant to them all of your favor and your grace. We pray in your name and in the name of our Lord, the Christ. Amen.
Well, thank you, Reverend Hughes, for your inspiring message and your continued contribution to our great city. Counselor Presley?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. To your honor, justice, freedom, and the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Counselor Presley, and thank you, Reverend Dr. Conley Hughes. Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please recognize that both Counselor Baker and Counselor Jackson have arrived? If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of last meeting will stand approved. Seeing, hearing, no objections, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Document number 1552, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend $169,056 for the FY15 U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, known as HUD, Fair Housing Assistance Program grant, awarded to the Boston Fair Housing Commission to support the training, administrative, and FY15 investigatory work of the Fair Housing Assistant Partnership Agreement.
Document 1552 will be assigned to the Committee on Housing.
Document number 1553, message in order amending Chapter 16 of the City of Boston Code Ordinance pertaining to the Regulation of Advertising.
Document 1553 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Yeah, if you'd like. Reports of public offices and others, Madam Clerk.
A letter from Counselor from District Eight, Josh Saikum. Dear President Linehan, please be advised that I will not be in attendance at the Boston City Council meeting on Wednesday, September 23, 2015, due to Yom Kippur. Please ask the City Clerk to read this matter into the record. Sincerely, Josh Saikum.
Could you read documents 1554 through 1559, all the other document, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Document number 1554, notices received from the Mayor of the appointment of Joseph Orfand as a member of the Boston Conservation Commission to serve a term expiring November 1, 2016. Document number 1555, communication was received from Counselor Josh Saikum that he will not be in attendance at the Boston City Council meeting on Wednesday, September 23, 2015. Document number 1556, notices received from the Mayor of his absence from the city from 10:15 a.m. until 5:15 p.m. on Friday, September 18, 2015. Document number 1557, notices received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter Six of the ordinances of 1979 regarding actions taken by the Mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of August 12, 2015. Document number 1558, notices received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter Six of the ordinances of 1979 regarding actions taken by the Mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of September 2, 2015. And document number 1559, communication was received from Sally D. Glora, City Auditor, transmitting reports listing transfers made solely for the purpose of closing accounts for fiscal year 2015.
Documents 1554 through 1559 will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, could you please recognize that Counselor Flaherty is in attendance?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, matters recently heard for possible actions, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Document number 1293, order for hearing to discuss urban wild protections for certain parcels of land along American Legion Highway.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Environment and Parks, Counselor O'Malley, on document 1293.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Monday, September 21, the Committee on Environment and Parks held a hearing on document 1293. This was sponsored by counselors at large, Stephen Murphy and Michelle Wu. It was a really thoughtful, wide-ranging hearings, specifically on American Legion Highway and the possible designation as an urban wild. We heard terrific testimony from Austin Blackman, the City's Chief of Energy and Environment, as well as Commissioner Chris Cook and their colleagues. And more importantly, we heard from a number of neighbors who have been spearheading this project, working in concert with the at-large counselors, Counselor McCarthy and several others. This matter, I'd like to remain in committee. I think from it, we will begin a working session to see what tools we have at our disposal. It's a wide swath of land that has some control or ownership from the city, from the state, as well as some private individuals. But clearly, it's a very, very important part of our city that we want to protect and grow our open green space. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to first thank Chairman O'Malley for holding the hearing in such an expedited fashion. I wanted to offer that, you know, we're talking about certain small parcels of land along American Legion Highway, some owned by the city, some owned by the state, some owned by quasi-state agencies like DCR. And we're trying to get some urban wild protections for those various parcels. And one of the things that came out of the hearing the other day was just the changing of the name of the street from American Legion Highway to American Legion Parkway. And that's something that we're investigating now through research staff to see if it's the City of Boston Street, how do we change that name? I think that's just the first step in a series of steps that's going to afford green space protections to an area that I would say is blighted, American Legion Highway. At the very least, it deserves some human attention. And we're trying to make it a Parkway similar to VFW Parkway and an extension of the Emerald Necklace. And I want to commend Counselor Michelle Wu for her partnership with me on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Wu.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank our chairman for running a wonderful hearing, Counselor Murphy, and also Counselor Yancey, whose district and their partnership on this. As you heard already, there are a number of very interesting ideas that came out of it, some that will require a lot more time and process than others. So it's nice to come out of it having some concrete steps and a great group of residents and advocates who are really, really willing to roll up their sleeves and keep participating in the visioning and planning process to increase access to our city's natural treasures and especially a long stretch that has been neglected. So thank you very much, and I hope everyone will continue to participate.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Counselor Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to thank the Chair for convening this hearing, even though I had a conflict that couldn't break. Mr. President, this is a very important thoroughfare within the City of Boston, and I agree, it has not received the attention that it deserved. The vast majority of the length of American Legion Highway is now in District Four as a result of the most recent redistricting. Prior to that, certain decisions were made without proper consultation with community residents or with real consideration to the need to upgrade the green space in that area. Almost a decade ago, most of the mature trees up and down American Legion Highway were actually cut down. Over my objections, I think we only saved three of the mature trees along that stretch, and they were replaced by saplings, hundreds of saplings, but saplings nonetheless, as a result of a utility project along that route. More recently, there was a storage facility constructed to house light poles. I think that was a very inappropriate use of that parcel along American Legion Highway. So I'm looking forward to the working session so we can address that issue as well as so many others. And quite frankly, I am thrilled with the idea that Counselor Murphy just mentioned of renaming it from American Legion Highway to American Legion Parkway. I think that's an excellent idea. It should be supported and implemented. So I'm looking forward to the working session. Again, I want to thank everyone who participated in that hearing, particularly the Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Document 1293 will remain in the Committee on the Environment and Parks. Madam Clerk?
Document number 1174, order for hearing to discuss the city's natural gas leak problem.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Environment and Parks, Counselor O'Malley, on document 1174.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Environment and Parks had a busy Monday because later that afternoon, we held a hearing on document number 1174. It was a three-and-a-half-hour hearing in which we heard public testimony from the Mayor's office, state-elected officials, environmental advocates, activists, and concerned citizens. Obviously, the issue of gas leaks is a wide-ranging problem that affects all of greater Boston, and it was clear from many residents that this is a major, major concern. We consider the environmental impacts, the safety concerns, the cost to consumers, as well as the working relationship between the city and the utility companies regarding gas leaks and repairs to public ways. Early last year, a local group of concerned moms calling themselves Mothers Out Front reached out to me to call attention to this matter. July 15, I filed this order for a hearing, which was cosponsored by District Eight Counselor Josh Saikum, as well as all of you. National Grid testified at this hearing. They are responsible for 749 miles of gas mains in the City of Boston, and they serve 164,000 customers. That's about 95% of all the gas received by Bostonians, with the remaining 5% for Eversource, formerly N-Star, which I found out is concentrated only to Hyde Park. So Hyde Park has Eversource, the rest of the city, as National Grid. Testimony came from city officials, including Austin Blackman again, Chief of Environment, Energy, and Open Space, Carl Spector, the Director of Climate and Environmental Planning for the Environmental Department, as well as Mark Cardirelli from the Boston Public Works Department. Mark is our point person, working with utilities when we have to open a street for another matter, maybe water and sewer, maybe a cable company that would coordinate with them. One thing that I found out that I hope will be an actionable item from this hearing and the subsequent working sessions that I'll be calling is that while we do make sure that the utilities are aware of one another when work is being done or when the street is being opened, there's no real incentive to force them to make repairs. So for example, National Grid knows when Center Street is being dug up for a water main issue, and while there may be three or four or more gas leaks along that stretch, they're not compelled to fix it. I think that could be something that we change, a policy that we change going forward. Gas leak estimates vary, but the City of Boston said that as of February 2015, Boston had a total of 1,757 gas leaks of all grade levels. Now, it's important to note, it's difficult to find a firm number because others have pegged the number at 2, 3, even 4,000 gas leaks. But according to these numbers, Dorchester has the highest number of gas leaks, 620 total, with 579 of those in the Tier Three category. We also learned, and this is a new thing, that gas leaks are tiered, 1, 2, and 3, 3 being the least dangerous and 1 being the most dangerous. Each gave testimony on their role and responsibility and recognized that they are working diligently in collaboration with the utility companies, along with various city agencies, to ensure that the gas leak problems are properly and expeditiously addressed. Through the Department of Public Works' use of the City of Boston's COBUX City, which is an acronym for City of Boston Utility Coordination Software, and coordination with those various other city agencies, including water and sewer, as I said, they're able to expedite the permitting process to facilitate work for National Grid. The city is also working to further the Mayor's climate action plan, which will promote innovations to reduce energy costs in an environmentally friendly way. National Grid testified that the vast majority of leaks are small, do not pose an immediate threat of health or safety hazard risks to the public, and fall under Tier Three category or are considered non-hazardous. The schedule for replacing all of the gas main lines is within 20 years of the timeframe. That was troublesome to me, that we were looking at 20 years when with this old and crumbling infrastructure, many, many more could, leaks could spring during those 20 years. It was very helpful to us, where we were joined by a state-elected officials panel, particularly State Senator Jamie Eldridge and State Representative Lori Erlich, who sponsored landmark gas leak legislation that passed in 2014. That has given us some of the tools as a municipality to address that. They've also sponsored two House bills, or two bills, one in the House and the Senate, 2870 and 2871, which are currently before the House and include provisions phasing out the utility charge to customers for lost gas as well as road repair costs during construction, respectively. At next week's council meeting, I will be introducing two resolutions from this body to support passage of those two bills. Obviously, I invite and encourage all of you to sign on to that. A key component to one of those bills forbids the utility companies, the gas companies, from charging us for lost or escaped gas. Two other states have done this, Texas and Pennsylvania. I think that this is an incredible incentive to get the gas companies to fix those leaks because right now, we're spending about $90 million as ratepayers, all of us and the people we represent, for gas that is not used. I apologize I'm going on a little bit longer, but it was a very, very important hearing. We heard from other advocates from Mothers Out Front, Massachusetts Chapter of the Sierra Club Clean Water Action Home Energy Efficiency Team, who testified about the impacts of gas leaks on the environment. We also heard from an academic panel that included Dr. Nathan Phillips, BU Department of Earth and Environmental Sciences, and Richard Clapp, a doctor at Boston University School of Public Health. Numerous Boston residents offered their personal experiences with gas leaks and exposed their concerns, including safety and health of Boston's trees. I am asking that this remains in committee, that we begin working sessions to figure out exactly what we can do. Dealing with gas leaks in the City of Boston is not only a public health matter, which it is. This is very dangerous, and increased gas leaks cause enormous spikes in asthma rates, which, as a city, we're dealing with. It's not only an environmental concern, which it clearly is because there are trees that are dying, it's also the financially responsible thing to do. Because as I said, as ratepayers, we are paying close to $100 million annually in this escaped gas leak. So I look forward to having Boston play a role, supporting efforts made at the state legislature, and even going above and beyond that as we address this very, very, very important issue going forward. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I apologize for going over my allotted time.
We can feel your passion in your presentation. Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank Counselor O'Malley for holding the hearing, and it was quite an educational experience for all of us who attended. I did want to point out a couple of things, and I think Counselor O'Malley may have pointed this out. The Level 3 leaks, the less, the least severe leaks, I think they fix 25 of them a year, and there's somewhere around 400 and something leaks. So it would take them 15, 16, or 17 years to fix all of those. And they're gas leaks, and they're dangerous. Not only are they environmental concerns, public health concerns, there's a public safety component to this as well. They are overseen by the State Department of Public Utilities, but I don't know the mechanism for enforcement that the DPU has on this. I know that our DPW department was speaking about how they collaborate efforts with water and sewer and other utilities when they go out and carve up streets. But I believe, as a result of the hearing, I learned that the gas companies are on the honor system as to whether or not they fix these leaks. There's no independent inspection of any city or state nature that says this is done. They just sign a paper saying they've done it, and we accept it in good faith. And I know that we have budgetary issues and manpower issues in all of our city departments, but I believe that there's a role for the fire department here in Boston, at least in terms of overseeing these inspections and certifying the safety. We have a fire marshal, we have inspectors, and I believe that this would be an area where we could help the state and help ourselves and our constituents by improving public safety and making sure that what's being attested to by the utilities is, in fact, happening on the streets of Boston. So my congratulations to Counselor O'Malley. I look forward to the working sessions moving forward. I do believe the fire department would be a key tool in us having some oversight on this at the city level. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Document 1174 will remain in the Committee on Environment and Parks. Madam Clerk, motions, orders, and resolutions, please.
Document number 1560, Counselors Presley and O'Malley offer the following resolution in support of state legislation regarding decennial division of wards and precincts.
Chair recognizes Counselor Presley on 1560.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is not a new issue for this body. I want to thank, you know, Counselor Murphy for reminding myself and Counselor O'Malley of that. It is an important context, again, just to underscore the relevance of this body and that we do lead in these spaces. Unfortunately, nothing happened on the state level, but Counselor Ross did put forward a home rule specifically around this issue that did pass this body, but there's still nothing that has happened on the state level. So this is a resolution supporter of Rep. Erin Muckelwitz's bill, H. 3321, which would require, starting in 2021, that the Elections Department submit plans for new wards and/or precincts to the City Council, as well as the Mayor, for a vote after each census. This legislation will require precincts to have equal populations, reducing poll wait times and saving money by evenly distributing resources across the city. Currently, we have very large precincts, which means long lines for voters. We saw in the 2012 presidential elections that some precincts had wait times of over two hours. On the other side, we have very small precincts, which waste city and state money on unnecessary poll workers, space rental, voting machines, and supply. Now, we have seen great demographic changes across the city since the last time we drew new precinct boundaries. We have people that are living in areas of the city that were not initially thought of as residential areas when these boundaries were drawn. Some people, in particular those in the South Boston waterfront, have to walk over a mile simply to get to a polling place. And we all can recognize that elections are critical to the health of any democracy, and here in Boston, we need to ensure equitable access to polling locations and facilitate the process of participating in our city elections. Every 10 years, cities and towns in Massachusetts, except for Boston, are required to draw new precinct lines. The purpose of these new precinct boundaries, again, is to ensure the population is equitably distributed across each precinct. I want to thank Counselor O'Malley for partnering with me on this resolution, which has everything to do with one person, one vote, and equitable access and strengthening our democracy. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Counselor O'Malley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to thank my dear colleague and friend, at-large Counselor Anna Presley, for her leadership on this. This is, this is a very simple solution to a very complicated problem. Ward 5, Precinct 1, has a population of 6,010 residents. Ward 8, Precinct 6, has a population of 805 residents. Many of us, you know, worked hard on our own redistricting several years ago and remember coming up and trying to find ways that the, our council districts, which by law have to be within, I think it's 10% one way or another, of a median population or mean population. And this was difficult, so difficult, in fact, that we discovered during those deliberations and conversations and discussions that there's one precinct, I believe it's in Beacon Hill, it may even be around here, that has an A and a B sub-district at the state legislature, which we told at the time by our former Elections Commissioner that we could not emulate having an A and B the way it was there. So it shows how complicated it is. We all know redistricting, it can be a difficult and time-consuming endeavor. So anything we can do to help make a better system of how we divide the city into precincts makes sense to me. Moreover, as mentioned by Counselor Presley, let's assume, and we have seen Moreover, as mentioned by Counselor Presley, let's assume, and we have seen this in the last couple of election cycles, we've seen, in the last 10 or so years, we've seen some really energized campaigns that have turned out more and more people to vote. So let's assume that we hit 50 or 60 or maybe even 70% turnout in Ward 8, Precinct 6, and Ward 5, Precinct 1. That's unfair to the residents, who some will have to wait in line, it's unfair to the election workers, who will have in that, you know, more than quintuple the number of potential voters. So we need to do this better. This body has led, Counselor Murphy is going to offer an amendment that I wholeheartedly support that reminds this body what we've done in years past under former Council President Mike Ross and many of us. It's time that we make sure the state legislature allows Boston to do what every other city does and, and as a result, is able to have better, more efficient elections, which I think helps all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did, I am offering an amendment, which I believe the clerk has and everybody has on their desk. And I think maybe the clerk should read the amendment before I speak on it? Is that?
Okay. Oh, it is, it's a late file?
It's a late file.
It's a late file.
But this is, actually, that would be the first.
How would it be a late file if it's a?
This is.
When he's making amendment, if it happens to be the same as the, the late file?
It wasn't supposed to be a late file, it was supposed to be.
But you're making amendment, and it just happens to be titled as a late file, but he's making an amendment, is there a second?
21560. Good.
All those, so you have, the amendment is supported, okay? I mean, you can get up and speak on it now. It's on the floor as an amendment. Go ahead, speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I remember, because I was in your position in 2011 as president of the body, I remember my predecessor and our former colleague, City Councilor Mike Ross, advocating for and filing a home rule petition, which we assigned to joint committees because we had Census and Redistricting Committee going on, and this was a home rule petition, which by law goes to government operations. So Mike Ross filed this docket on January 26, 2011, and there were three public hearings, June 6, August 23, and a final working session held Monday, September 12. And a committee report, which is enclosed, came out of it on September 28, recommending docket 0184, a home rule petition for special law regarding the decennial division of precincts in the city of Boston to pass in a new draft. And it was signed by our current city clerk, Maureen Feeny, as chair of the Committee on Government Operations, and our current president, yourself, Bill Linehan, for the Committee on Census and Redistricting. And if you look at the home rule petition, there are the whereas's that we always have as the preamble, and then the petition for a special law regarding the decennial division of wards and precincts. And you look at House Bill 3321, which was filed by Aaron Muckelwitz with a whole host of co-hosts, and it is the same exact language. So I don't know how it got to this point where we, this body, had done a home rule petition and had it go through our committee structure and public hearings, and passed and went to the State House, and then no action was taken. Usually what happens in that case, Mr. President, is it comes back to the body and we send it up for another, in another session. But this did not. This was a statewide bill that parrots the language that came out of the city council. So my amendment basically just gives the credit where it belongs. This bill started here in the Boston City Council, and this whereas that I'm attempting to add adds that fact to the resolution, which I believe Councilors Presley and O'Malley are going to move suspension and adoption. And I concur wholeheartedly with that. Are you going to send it to committee? Oh, it's going to committee? Okay, so we could amend it in committee then, Mr. President? Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that articulation. An history lesson. Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Jackson?
I will be brief, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge how timely and important this is. This was, redistricting is already hard enough, and to do it with pieces of a puzzle that are not the same size makes it almost impossible and a very difficult process, an already very difficult process even more difficult. The compelling just mantra of one person, one vote, as Counselor Presley noted, needs, this has to happen, and we can't punt on it again because it's hard. Right? People send us here to do very difficult and hard work, and Counselor Presley, Counselor O'Malley are bringing that up, and it is in the spirit of Counselor Ross, to, to move this forward and to move forward with a, with a solution. We have to do this. And then, as noted, if people don't remember, when, when Deval Patrick first ran, Governor Deval Patrick, they ran out of ballots in certain precincts in the city of Boston, and literally as he was giving his acceptance speech, there were people who were still in line because they couldn't vote. We can't have that. That's not what democracy looks like. What democracy looks like is people having the opportunity and the ease to go and vote. Counsel Flaherty and I were just speaking. The other aspect that we have to take into account is that many of the schools and parishes people live in now. So it is now a good time to go back and look at where we do this, and also accessibility, and whether or not we are inviting, an inviting space, an accessible space for all of those in our community who are disabled, which is at least 20% of our population. Kudos to you for, for bringing this up, and we should push this at our level, and we should ensure that our friends at the State House adopt this. Thank you. Please add my name.
Please add Counselor Jackson's name. Please add Counselor McCallum's name. Please add Counselor Wu's name. Please add my name. Please add Counselor Seomo's, Counselor Flaherty's. Before we, I send this to committee, oh, Counselor, please add Counselor Lamatina's name. Before I send this to committee, we do have something on the floor, which was a proposed amendment. Does the council want to withdraw that amendment, or do you want us to take a vote on it? Okay. Okay, so you have the amendment all in front of you, and you know what it is? Right. Are all those in favor of Counselor Murphy's amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and Counselor Murphy's amendment has been added to this resolution. Okay? This particular resolution will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Thank you all. I'm informed by the clerk that there are four late-file matters, which in absence, is it four or three?
It's three because.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Yep, no, I, I saw the withdrawal. I'm informed by the clerk that there are three late-file matters, which in absence of objection will be added to the agenda. Hearing no objections, the matters are so added. The clerk will read the first late-file matter.
First late-file matter is offered by Counselor Charles Yancey, an order for hearing regarding free Wi-Fi in Boston Housing Authority senior housing developments. Whereas the internet has transformed daily life at home, in school, and around workplace, making cheap and reliable internet access a key concern for all Bostonians as more and more essential services have moved online. Therefore ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council holds a hearing to examine the feasibility of providing free Wi-Fi in public senior housing developments. Representatives from the Boston Housing Authority, the Department of Innovation and Technology, Massachusetts Senior Action, the South End Technology Center, and other interested parties, and the public shall be invited to attend. Filed on September 23, 2015.
Madam Clerk, could you read the second late-file matter also? Counselor Yancey will address both.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the city council, offered by Counselor Charles Yancey, order for hearing regarding free Wi-Fi, this is the same thing. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Order for hearing regarding free Wi-Fi in Boston Housing Authority family housing developments. Whereas the internet has transformed daily life at home, in school, and around the workplace, making cheap and reliable internet access a key concern for all Bostonians as more and more essential services have moved online. Therefore be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council holds a hearing to examine the feasibility of providing free Wi-Fi in public house, family housing developments. Representatives from the Boston Housing Authority, Boston Housing Authority Resident Advisory Board, the Department of Innovation and Technology, the South End Technology Center, and other interested parties, and the public shall be invited to attend. Filed September 23, 2015.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Yancey?
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to thank central staff for working on both of these orders. Mr. President, the reason we have two orders to consider free Wi-Fi for public housing developments is, is pretty straightforward. One focuses on senior citizens and their access to the internet. The other focuses on family units. This was first brought to my attention by residents of senior housing. And as I looked into the matter, Mr. President, I discovered that, you know, even some of our family units do not have access to the internet because of economic reasons and other logistical issues. So I believe that hearings on both of these could certainly coincide, but I want us to be able to discern between the senior and family unit. Mr. President, today, in 2015, if you don't have access to the internet, you really are locked out of very basic means of communications. This didn't exist just a couple of decades ago. And many senior citizens feel handicapped by the lack of access, and I believe by working with the BHA and with even private elderly development, that we can provide access to our senior citizens as well as our family unit. So I'm asking that this matter be referred to the appropriate committee for an expeditious hearing, see what resources we can bring together to ensure that all of our residents have access to the internet and that it's not restricted because of either age or income. So I'm looking forward to an expeditious hearing, and certainly would invite all of our colleagues to sign on to both. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Yancey, I compliment your effort. This is great. I think it's a, this is a no-brainer with the digital divide that we know that exists, in particular disproportionately for poor households. But in addition, we also know that you can't even apply for a job at Target on paper anymore. I'm sorry, Parje, on, on paper anymore. So it is absolutely critical if people are going to be able to have mobility and to lift themselves out of the situations that they're in and enter the workforce, that you have to have access and internet capability. This is, I believe, a no-brainer for BHA, and it is a targeted population. In addition, it also allows for seniors to not be isolated. We know that oftentimes people are isolated from families, in particular families that are far away. This gives an opportunity there. What I would add, and I hope would get picked up in the hearing, is actually some training that goes along with this, so people are able to learn how to make those, make those connections. This is really cool, and I wholeheartedly support this effort, and I would like to have my name added. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Please add Counselor Jackson's name, Counselor Lamatina's name, Counselor O'Malley's name, Counselor Presley, Counselor Wu. Please add my name, Counselor Seomo, Counselor Flaherty. And Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Gone to the library. You may not believe this, but I've gone to the library, Mr. President.
Has it grown up?
And at our library in Hyde Park, and at Copley Square's library, you find seniors using free internet, because they don't have Wi-Fi in these, and they go to the library so that they can get on the internet. And this, if we can adopt Counselor Yancey's idea, that will stop. They can do it in their own home. And why not? Time is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. And so those, both of those matters, Madam Clerk, the first late-file matter and the second will be placed in the Committee on Housing. Would you read the third late-file matter, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Offered by Counselor Tito H. Jackson in the city council, a resolution calling for moratorium on high-stakes standardized tests in public schools. Whereas our future well-being relies on high-quality public education system that prepares all students for college, careers, citizenship, and lifelong learning. Therefore be it further resolved that the Boston School Committee calls on state and federal officials to immediately adopt a moratorium on all high-stake use of standardized tests, so that educators, parents, and other members of our community can work together to develop assessment systems that support positive teaching practices and better prepare students for lifelong learning. House Bill Number 340, before the Massachusetts General Court, would impose such a moratorium on high-stakes use and standardized tests in Massachusetts.
Counselor Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The Mildred Avenue School in Mattapan had 29 days of testing last school year. On average, we spent about $2,900 per pupil on that testing. We have gone test crazy, at a time when, understanding that folks who are in private school, they don't have to take the same tests that the young people who are in the Boston public schools have to, have to take. We know that it is widely recognized that standardized testing is inadequate and often unreliable measure of both student learning as well as educator effectiveness. We have to get it together and figure out how we educate the whole child and not simply have people who are teaching only to the test. Last week, I put, put forward some legislation to look at recess. One of the reasons why many schools don't have recess is specifically because they are teaching to the test. I've been to many schools where instead of heroes and she-ros on the wall, we actually see test questions on, on the wall in these schools. We need to hit the pause button, and we are now also looking at the part, the part test, which the Boston Public Schools doesn't even have the actual internet capacity to handle everyone taking the test at the same time. In many schools, what has happened is a test that would normally take a week is taking two weeks. More time out of the classroom, more time away from instruction. We are, are moving towards a place where we're not educating, we're actually teaching our young people simply to take a standardized test, some which many are going to do well on and some that they're not. The question is, are we truly educating them? We have to hit the pause button, and that's what this resolution is about. I would hope that we could suspend and pass today because of the pending legislation. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not trying to cause a wrinkle here, I just, a couple of things I just want to say. Number one is, I recall in 2004, the city council voting on a resolution sponsored by Councilors Turner and Yancey, requiring, on, on the issue of MCAS and, and testing, and whether or not they should be mandatory. I think the city council came down on that time against mandatory testing. But this resolution says in the resolved that the Boston School Committee, in both resolves, and I'm not sure, and I guess I'm seeking legal affirmation, that we should pass a resolution as the city council resolving that the school committee do something. I think if it says, resolve that the Boston City Council supports House Bill 340, that's something we could do, but it's just a question, I don't know, I just want to make sure if we do something, we do it within the parameters. we do it within the parameters of the law.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. There are other lights flashing, but I'd like to address this issue first. Counselor Jackson makes an amendment to change the wording from the Boston School Committee to the Boston City Council. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Therefore, that language has been changed. Counselor Presley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend the maker and wish to have my name added. I probably shouldn't be saying much because he said it so eloquently, but I do just want to just reinforce the fact that, you know, in this, this culture of constant testing and this push towards rigor and this idea that the only way that we can get to improved outcomes is to focus on rigor, I think there are many theories that have played out that dispute that idea that we see every day. Again, in teaching the whole child, being honest about the fact that many of the children entering our doors are not whole, and what is our commitment to making sure that we support them in being whole so they can be receptive to learning? But I also just want to say that when you talk to employers, many of the students that are coming out of this test-crazy culture and environments that, with that overemphasis on rigor and outcomes, are often lacking in some of the core fundamentals that employers in this country need in its workforce. Grit, resilience, character, citizenship, soft skills. So, you know, this is just, you know, again, I just want to just highlight that, you know, testing will never do away with it. It has its place. It is a metric. It is a gauge. But whether you're talking about the civil service exam or the MCAS, you know, none of them are a fully comprehensive, you know, metric of one's aptitude, acumen, ability to contribute or to lead. If we weren't to be tested on this own body, are you smarter than a fifth grader? I think some of us, you know, might not pass those tests. But that doesn't mean that we don't have something of contribute and value to add to this city and to this governing body. Well, I'll just speak for myself, okay? All of you. But with that, I'll sit down. I just wish to commend the maker, and something has got to be done, and I wish to have my name added. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Please add Counselor Presley's name. Please add my name. Add Counselor Lamatina's name, Counselor Murphy's name, Counselor McCarthy's. Counselor Baker?
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually had a question through you for the maker, but he answered it in his speech. I'm quite concerned about the POC testing. I find them a little over the top. And also, just so people know, there's a lot of talk around advanced work classes. So you, so children are tested one day, and based on that one test, children are invited or not invited into the advanced work. When my son took the advanced work, he went in with a broken arm, didn't want to be in school, didn't really know what that test was, didn't care about it, was not invited to advanced work. And until his teachers said to my wife, you need to, you need to fight for this kid because he belongs to be in advanced work, he wasn't there the day, he emotionally or mentally wasn't there for the test. So these are some of the testing that I hope we're looking at, not just POC, not just MCAS, but, but, but based on the overall student, I think so. And I would wish to add my name, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms., Counselor Baker. Please add Counselor Baker's name and add Counselor Siomo's and Counselor Flaherty's name. Counselor Yancey?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. When I was a student in the Boston public school system, I did have to take a test to get into Boston Technical High School, and, you know, Counselor Murphy had tests to get into Boston Latin, and several of our colleagues did as well. But in addition to that, I had the opportunity to take sheet metal. I had the opportunity to take woodworking. I had the opportunity to, to experience some music classes and arts and culture, as well as sciences and math, and I think I did okay. The equivalent of advanced work classes, of course, was implied in the tracking system within the Boston public school system. And I'm certain that if I did not have parents who advocated for me going through the schools, I would have been tracked to a different level, non-college level. That was just the opposite of my case. So I think it's altogether appropriate that we ask questions about what we're doing to our children in schools, whether we're depriving them of, I mean, not even have civic classes. To me, seems totally inappropriate for the 21st century. But somehow, that seems inacquainted when it comes to testing. So I certainly support the initiative on the part of Counselor Jackson, the Chair of Education. I thank Counselor Murphy for his institutional memory on this issue many, many years ago. And of course, I'd like to have my name added, but also, I think it was perhaps a Freudian slip that took place within the initial resolution, because in many ways, this body has become de facto school committee. Since the school committee is an appointed body, the only elected representative to advocate for our children many times is the mayor and the city council. And since the mayor appoints the school committee, the only new ideas that can be introduced very often in terms of advocating for the education of our children comes from the Boston City Council. So again, I want to thank my colleagues and ask that my name be added.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Please add Counselor Yancey's name. Counselor O'Malley?
Thank you, Mr. President. As we all know, public education was born in this country, in this city, and I would venture a guess that in those days, there was some metric of testing. We all had it growing up. I'm no longer the youngest member of this body, but I still consider myself relatively young and remember taking tests in school. And to be completely candid, it was seen in those days as, this is nice, we're at a class for a day or two. It is shocking how standardized testing has changed from the point of view of a student, a teacher, and a parent now. It is fraught with stress. I see it in my nephews, all Boston public school students, you know, the stress that they have to go because there is such an emphasis on testing, on one test, on the ramifications that will come from doing poorly or doing well. So I commend the maker of this resolution, the Chair of the Committee on Education, Counselor Jackson. I think that we need to recognize that having some sort of approach to seeing how students are doing is, of course, important and part of education, but my God, by having these one high-stake, high-stake tests, we're doing no service to our students, their parents, or our teachers. So ask that my name be added and support his efforts to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just quickly rise to thank Counselor Jackson for bringing this up. We talked about this at length during the education hearings and the budget hearing, that teachers want to teach, not teach, not, not become test monitors. And I think that the one issue that we haven't talked about really is the time. The time that they're spending on these tests, they're missing out on the Revolutionary War and the Civil War. They're missing out on civics, how government actually works. And Counselor Presley mentioned it, social skills, soft skills, this is what they're lacking. And so I couldn't agree with Counselor Jackson more, and I hope we move this forward.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Flaherty?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a comment, adding to have my name added. In the spirit of Pope Francis visiting our country and being a product of B.C. High and Boston College, much to the chagrin of my colleague from Catholic Memorial, but I really think we should be emulating the Jesuit tradition of education in terms of educating the entire child, the well-being and well-roundedness of that. So if Boston could take a chapter out of the Jesuit page, our schools would be in heck of a better position educating the next generation of Bostonians. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. So Counselor Jackson moves suspension and adoption of the third late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and Counselor Jackson's late-file matter has been adopted. At this time, is, would anybody wish to remove a matter from the green sheet? Okay. Sounds good. There are six late-file matters, which in absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing, hearing, no objections, the matters are so added. The Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda has been adopted. I'd ask all guests and all members to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Baker, Bob Shaughnessy. For Counselor Siomo, Garrett McGowan. For Counselor Lamatina, Gillian McLaughlin. And Frederick Steen. For myself and the Chair, and Counselor Flaherty, William Billy Hartford and William J. Donovan, Jr. For the Chair, Flaherty and Counselor Murphy, Edward K. Phillips. For Counselor Murphy, Janet Palliogas. For Counselor O'Malley, Anne Nardoni. For Counselor Yancey, Marcella A. Tatum. For the councilors, a hold, Bella Bond. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves, when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals and is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, September 30th, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor, adjourn and say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The council is so adjourned.[1699.92]